When it's smaller, it's more personal and it's more special. So we appreciate our Lincoln friends and our guests as well. So, welcome to the December edition of the City of St. Charles Board Meeting. We are going to start, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we can please rise and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I will hand it over to Dr. Seifert for the superintendent's -- yeah, I said that right -- superintendent's comments.
Superintendent's comments. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Well, our first announcement is we're going to announce our next leader of Harden Middle School tonight. This is Dr. Darryl Diggs. He currently serves as Assistant Principal at Parkway South High School, a role he has occupied since 2012. Prior to his current role, Dr. Diggs served as a science teacher at Parkway South Middle School from 2007 to 2012. And he will take over for Dr. Gettermeyer, who is retiring at the end of this school year for the 1920 school year. So, welcome, Dr. Darryl Diggs. So I'll put you on the spot. Anything you'd like to tell everybody?
Incredible honor. Excited to be the leader of an amazing school. I just want to champion and also just continue the great work that I have had and be my new colleague. It's going to be a great adventure.
Awesome. Yeah, congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome, Darryl. We already have plans to have Darryl go to Harden Middle School tomorrow morning and meet that awesome staff. So we're looking forward to that tomorrow morning. So, welcome. Couple of announcements, and I hope I don't steal your thunder, but I'm going to talk about Lincoln for a couple of times. Is it okay if I start off with Lincoln? So, two things. So, the holiday helpers over at Lincoln got ahold of me again, and these kids are unbelievable because they basically, very professionally and nicely, kind of tell me what they want to do and get me wrapped right into it with my own money. We get our central office team involved and our admin team. So, in a nutshell, for the second year, at least I think it's the second year, second year, there's four or five kids there in a group there that decided that they wouldn't want to give back, and they were collecting money to raise money to buy toys. And they physically go and get the toys, buy the toys, and then give -- for the St. Jude kids. And so, they were -- what kind of days did you guys have? We had Jeans Day here, but...
We love our jeans.
Yeah.
We have Jeans Day, Stuffed Animal Day, Pack Day.
So, we did it here. A couple other schools joined in, and I think it was around $1,000 for the kids. So, it was awesome. What a great project. So, we can clap for that real quick. That's awesome. And then, last Friday, we were like two minutes late, so I felt like we really kind of threw it off a little bit. But, the first grade teachers did an awesome job to kind of let us do it. But Dr. Lewis and I were the conductors of the Polar Express for first grade, and we punched the tickets and the whole deal, and it was a lot of fun. I loved doing that. And thank you for having us with that. So, a couple other things, we're looking forward -- did you like that? Did you enjoy that?
Do you believe?
What was that?
Do you believe?
Okay.
I thought you said pick up the lead.
No. Do you believe? Whatever. It just has to be that voice.
I heard you the first time.
Thank you, Maria.
I do too.
Thank you.
So, a couple of things that we've talked about too, project-wise. Be on the lookout for a couple of different videos on the next -- if it's not before break, it'll be after break, but we're going to do a video that highlights our APR score in terms of areas of strength, where we've seen growth, but also our areas of improvement and things that we need to work on as a school district. So, we want to put that together for not only our teachers and staff and for people who work here, but also for our parents and community members. So, you're going to see an APR video, and you're also going to see a video that -- and we've talked about this as a project of showcasing all the awesome construction that we've had in the district. So, those two videos, be on the lookout for that for the next couple of months. In terms of construction, Coverdale has all moved in, which is amazing. West, their secured entry is almost complete. Noel's new learning wing is almost complete. Lincoln's renovation, would you like to talk about that for just a second?
It's beautiful.
It's fantastic.
It's gorgeous. It's our library looks like a college library. It is absolutely stunning. And our office, and our secured entry, it's just gorgeous.
That's great.
Ms. Williams would love to have you come see it any time.
We're going to have --
Oh, you're going to have your...
We're still finishing up some things that are on back work. It's really so historic and custom that we're waiting for some things still to come in. When it's all finished, we're going to have a breakfast. Hello.
That's awesome.
It will be second semester.
That's really cool.
At the last meeting, I talked about your basement door.
Yes.
It's awesome.
Isn't it? It is.
She did talk about it last night.
And our kids know. We tell them how long they are going to go.
Well, just no staff will be able to eat.
You don't say too much because a lot of them don't have a specific goal.
Doesn't take much, does it?
And then, our last project, that St. Charles West North End Stadium project with the Jefferson Office, there's another hallway connection at Monroe, and then also some of the driveway work is underway or at least been improved, so we're excited about that. A couple of staff shout-outs. Chris Hollam is now Dr. Chris Hollam over at Coverdale, so we're excited about that. And then, Amy Delaney over at St. Charles West just earned her National Board Certification. Anything you want to add to that?
No, that's a massive accomplishment. Only 3% of educators across the nation have earned that accolade award.
What is it?
So, the National Board Certification is just a national organization that it takes at least two years of rigorous work, portfolio work, and reflections on your own teaching and exams in order to meet that criteria. And so, it's pretty remarkable.
Is it like a degree?
It's not a degree.
A certification behind your name?
It's a certification that lasts for five years, and then after that fifth year, they can do additional work to renew it. And for us, in our district and many other districts, we do compensate teachers for that. So, in our district, if you have your National Boards, we compensate them the same way we would if they had their doctorate. So, they earn a $3,000 stipend on top of their salary.
Each year?
Each year, it's that. So, Amy then for sure will have the next five years while she's employed, and then if she recertifies for the period after that, then it continues.
Can she take that to another school district?
Yes. She can get anywhere in the range.
So, our next...
We won't let her, though.
No.
We'll keep her.
And that's the thing, because through the District Professional Development Committee, when Amy started this process two years ago, we launched a scholarship to promote her teachers to talk.
Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
And so, it's about a $2,000 process, presented by this entire process. So, the DPC at any given time will fund two teachers through the scholarship process for National Boards. So, that's kind of exciting. And with that, we do have them sign a contract that they will teach with us for at least three additional years afterwards in order to...
And our next podcast is next week. I think we're doing Friday, and we're going to have Ms. Delaney with us, and so she's going to talk about that process. So, a couple of other things real quick. Winter season is here. Our turkey tip-off, we went 2-2. West won 2, High won 2. And I think in the four years I've been here, I think it was one of the biggest crowds we've seen in recent past history. But I know there have been huge, huge crowds before, but it was a really, really neat crowd that night and just an awesome atmosphere. And then, shout-out to our St. Charles High Wrestling Group. Both the boy -- a team, boys and girls, won the FZN tournament. Were you there, Mr. Horn?
Of course.
Of course. It was awesome. I heard the boys, like, had to come from behind to tie Zuma North, is that correct?
Yeah, they had to win the last match.
That's awesome. And then, just real quick, and speaking of St. Charles High, there's always great things that are happening in our school district, but we just want to pause for just a second and remember the tragic loss that we had just three or four weeks ago. We lost Anderson Zamudio, and our thoughts and prayers are still with the family, and he has two awesome sisters that are still in our school district, and we're just loving and caring for that family. So, just wanted to make sure that we said something there. And then, also to everybody else, happy holidays. I know our staff's probably ready for a little bit of a break. They work so extremely hard. We love our staff. We love our students, and I know everybody's ready for a great break, too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Item 3.04, Board Communication. Want to say any?
The only communication I have is I wanted to make sure everybody knows the St. Charles West Craft Fair is Saturday. Is that at West?
It is at West, yes, and it's going to be bigger this year. Usually, it's in the Commons and the gym. They're opening it up to the auxiliary gym as well. I get the fine honor of driving the golf cart and taking the vendors from their cars to the high school.
That's fantastic.
Yes, Barb Boland didn't give me much of a choice. She said, "Josh, this is what you're going to do."
And you just say, "Yes."
I just say, "Yep."
One thing I forgot to say, too, is there's been some awesome holiday concerts, too. I was able to get the West Choir Concert last night, High. We were able -- Charles and I got to hear the magical -- I say that wrong every time, but from St. Charles High yesterday morning, got a preview of that. But we have some awesome concerts going on, too, for the holiday seasons.
Yeah, thank you. I would just add that everything that Dr. Seifert has reported is visualized on Twitter. So, I would ask you again, follow our school district on Twitter. And every school has Twitter. So, I mean, so much to know. And it's pictures, and it's great, so you're up to know. And then, it is the holiday season, so I would just remind everybody, if you know you like to make a donation around the holiday time, just think about it. Think about that.
Awesome.
It's a place to be generous. So, that's all we have.
Yeah, good message. Thank you. All right, item 3.05. Since Donna is not here, I will go ahead and read her part. As many of you know, the open session of our board meeting is televised. The next portion of our open meeting will consist of public recognition. Through participation in the public recognition portion of our meeting, all parties give consent to the televised broadcast of information and images as well as other district-related media. If you prefer not to participate, you have that option. Though technically, it's not televised, it is on the interwebs in YouTube land. So, we have a nice little camera up there. All right, Danielle?
All righty. So, tonight, we have one school that's being recognized, so I'd like to invite up Julie Williams, Principal of Lincoln Elementary.
Thank you very much. And I would like to -- you mentioned the size of the crowd, and at Lincoln, we like to say it's quality, not quantity.
Yes.
And you certainly have that tonight.
Yes.
So, I would like to bring up Ms. Brittany LaRose, Mrs. Jamie Quinn, Mr. Michael Brown, and Ms. Amber Tempelts Crawford, or we call her Ms. TC. So, before I talk about these guys, I can promise you that whatever I could possibly say will not do them justice. So, I'll just say that. But it is my honor to recognize these four tonight. These four individuals represent everything that is right about education and our world. They work in our Victory Classroom. So, our Victory Classroom is the district program for students that have the most -- and you guys hear about behavioral and emotional needs. They work in the program that hosts the students that have the most intense and significant emotional and behavioral needs in our district. They welcome kids into their classroom when the kid is in complete crisis and can no longer be successful at their home school. The students they work with have trauma and many times enter the program both verbally and physically aggressive, and this team truly makes miracles happen. They get to know their students. They take the time to learn about them as people. They share their lives with their students, and they develop deep relationships with kids. In this culture of care and unwavering support, the students learn to feel safe, and they begin to open up about their trauma and their emotional needs. So, in education, we know about something called adverse childhood experiences, and those are things like your parent is addicted to drugs or alcohol, or you have been physically abused, or you've been abandoned, or whatever. They're a list of things that you think, "Oh, my goodness." And the research shows if you have four of those, your brain goes under toxic stress and has a reaction to that. The students in their class have an average score of eight to nine, every kid that's been in their program. So, that's just the type of student they're servicing each day. And they truly make these miracles happen. So, the kids have their support, and they learn to feel safe and begin to open up about their trauma and emotional needs. They learn to talk about their feelings, and they learn healthy ways to cope and deal with their very hard life experiences. The students learn to trust people and learn how to feel proud about themselves. These guys teach kids who have had extremely hard paths, both in life and in school, that they can be successful in every way, and we get to see it happen. It is truly amazing. Sometimes, someone will ask how a student that may have come from another school is doing, and when I respond with complete honesty that they are doing great, the other person may be shocked and say, "Oh, do you think it's the smaller class environment?" And depending on my mood, depends on my response. Sometimes, I may just say something, and other times, I -- the real response is, please know it is not the smaller environment, but it is absolutely because of the environment. It is because of the environment of family, support, trust, care, high expectations, focus on learning, focus on being your best, and unconditional love. They have created an environment of teamwork amongst themselves and the students as a whole and family. They support each other during the fun times and the hard times. An example, yesterday, we have a little kindergartner that we're working with. She is not a part of their classroom, but we bring her to their classroom regularly to help, and I could not get her in the door. She was struggling tremendously. And a little girl who's in their class had three cookies, and she had told me about the three cookies at breakfast because she was so excited about these cookies. And she saw we couldn't get this girl in the door because she just was not having it, and she went to -- over to the girl, and she said, "If you come in, I'll give you a cookie," unwarranted by anyone. And she said, "Come on, we'll get you calm." So, the girl came in the room. The other little boy, who's only been with them a couple of weeks, ran to the door, pulled the doorstop up, and said, "We're good." And then, the other little boy looked completely dysregulated because the girl got a cookie, and she really wanted those cookies. She gave her a cookie, him a cookie, and there was a little boy in crisis in the safe room. She went in to try and give the other boy her third cookie. He didn't want it, and so she gave it to the other little girl. That's what they teach these kids who are in complete disarray, who come to them hitting, screaming, biting, kicking. That's the type of impact. They teach them to see and act like that without one adult saying anything. So, it is absolutely because of the environment and how they teach the kids to deal with those times. They support each other. They are the definition of team. We can talk about teams and PLCs. We joke about -- because they have to be extremely consistent. You can't play mom against dad, and we do have a dad. Thank you, Mr. Brown. But they are consistent amongst each other to perfection, and that is such a support to the kids and to everyone. They have each other's backs, and they hold the kids and themselves to high standards. They are consistent. They are predictable. They are fair, and they are loving. They are role models to our students, our staff, and our families. They are leaders in our building, and when we are struggling to meet the needs of any student, we look to them for advice. As you can imagine, they have strong relationships with the families also. The families of their students love them. This team helps the families understand their kids and help their kids love school. They regularly attend kids' birthday parties, games. I went to a football game one Saturday. They were all already there, like, at a kid's football game on a Saturday. One student had Mrs. LaRose attend the IEP in Wentzville, and when the school asked for introductions, they introduced her as his other mom. They buy the students' birthday presents and Christmas presents with their own money. They host summer hangouts where they get together with the kids every couple of weeks over the summer just to show them they care about them all the time, not just when school's in session. It is a regular occurrence for kids who have graduated from fourth grade to call their classroom phone at any time and stop by to visit. They show their love to the kids and their families, and all of us see it and feel it and are better because of it. They teach the kids and their families to trust our schools, to trust them, to love them, and that it is okay to depend on people. All of this is what's most important, but they also teach the kids to be learners. The kids join their program typically way behind in academics because of all the emotional and behavioral challenges. And as I was thinking, I think every student but one has scored either proficient or advanced on the MAP test because their basic needs are met, and then they just skyrocket with their learning. So, that is a testament to their growth in every way. So, these guys make their kids, the families at Lincoln, our building, and our district and our community a better place. And we got this program five years ago, and all of them at Lincoln, and we are better because of it. So, I can't thank them all enough. So, please give them a round of applause.
And so, the board and administration would like to also personally thank you for all of your contributions to Lincoln School and to our school district community. So, in just a second, we're going to have you go around the dais to shake hands. But first, Julie, why don't you hop in this photo?
I'm at it.
But first, we're going to take some social media photos. Got it? All right, if you'd like to start us over?
Oh, something I was going to say, too, and I got to this. When I see any of their names on the subway, we're here.
Hey, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Hey, thank you very much. Hi, thank you. Thank you so much.
There's no problem. It's a nice car. It's like we're talking about. Julie, you say we don't count.
Tomorrow, we don't. We have a meeting.
We love her. We don't count.
So, while I agree that quality is often more important than quantity, I really do wish there were more people here that could have heard all the great things that you all do. So, thank you so much. Really appreciate all the hard work you do. I can imagine that it is not easy, so it takes special people to do that. So, thank you all.
And exactly what happens in that room is exactly what you just said. I mean, I see it when I'm there weekly, and there's times I'm like -- because I see the kids at other schools, and that's why our schools aren't doing it, but in that program, within like weeks, you're just like, "What? What is happening here?" It is like, really? I mean, honestly, you guys are awesome.
All right. So, we don't have any audience comments, Steve, unless you'd like to chime in? No, okay. Yeah, so Steve is a visitor from Orchard Farm. He's an Orchard Farm board member, so he's coming around. So, welcome. Welcome. So, we are going to move to the business part of the night. So, again, if you all want to stick around, you are welcome, but if you have other things you need to do, we understand. Yes.
Everybody is hurting my feelings.
I know.
Thanks, Donna. Thanks.
I'll be back. I'll be back. I'll be back. I'll be back. I'm in a good situation.
So, you need somebody to talk to, so I'll be back.
Oh, hey, good job. I didn't think you were coming. Listen to people.
And they've been together for five years, right? That group?
Yeah.
Julie's got something to figure out.
Yeah. All right. We are at item 3.07. May I have a motion to amend or adopt the agenda, please?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 4.01, Consent Agenda. For efficiency, the school board utilizes a consent agenda. Items placed on the consent agenda are routine in nature or are among the many decisions that the board has already determined are in the domain of the administration. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I would certainly accept that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 6.01, Policy Changes Second Reading. If I remember correctly, this is pretty just kind of technical stuff based on some law changes, so nothing controversial really.
It's just based on the change we made in short-term disability coverage from requiring everyone to participate to making it a voluntary product. So, we wanted to make sure it reflected it.
So, the policy reflects the change in work.
Excellent. All right, so we do need a motion, please.
So, would you like to make a motion? Okay, please.
I would to policies GCBC and GDBC as presented.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, 2021 Calendar. Who am I throwing this over to?
Rodney, I think.
Rodney.
Yes, well, thank you.
Rodney, you need your microphone so that the -- our friends in YouTube land can hear you.
I know we don't get a lot of airtime, so...
That's all right. When Jason was sitting in that seat, he didn't wear his microphone much, either.
That's the same thing you told me, Tom. All right, so we are bringing to you our 2021 and our 2122 calendars. You know, obviously, we have every calendar. I think what's most notable is that we are starting on the 24th, is a Monday, and we'll have a full week of school. Also notable is that we will finish the semester after winter break, which typically we do it before winter break. And there was really no getting around that, but we were fortunate enough to end on a Friday. So, if you were looking at the 2021 calendar, the semester ends on January 15th. But it also, this particular calendar, opposed to the other options when we were meeting with the committee, allows us to end before Memorial Day. We have the snow days built in, and so you can see the six snow makeups if you are looking at the student calendar. Also, something that's slightly unique this year is that we had to give Lewis and Clark their own teacher calendar. Typically, Lewis and Clark is on the elementary, middle, and Lewis and Clark calendar, but we had to give them the teacher their own calendar because on January 20 -- I'm sorry, on -- in January on the 14th, when we end the semester, well, that's for 2122, but it doesn't matter, we end, we'll have an early release day, but it'll be a teacher work day. Okay? And so, for elementary and middle, it's going to be a professional development day. Both calendars, again, allow us to end the school year before Memorial Day. Any questions regarding the calendars?
It seems to me, didn't we have an issue before about ending the calendar a week after Christmas? And that was the reason why we had it the week before, right before Christmas?
Ending the semester?
The -- I'm sorry, the semester.
Yeah, there was -- this was before even I got here, and probably Danielle can talk about a little bit. But typically, it lends itself better to be able to be done before the winter break for our high school students. Unfortunately, though... Unfortunately, though, now with our state saying we have to start so late, you really can't, you can't get around it because if you do, then you're going to make, it's going to be two lops out of a, you really just couldn't help it. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, before, as long as I've been here, the semester has always ended before winter break or right at winter break. So I don't know if there was a time at some point where a semester was afterwards, but we always tried very hard to balance the semesters, where Semester 1 is very close to the same amount of days as Semester 2 because at the high school level. When you have one semester course, you want to be able to cover the same amount of content. And with the calendar, the way it fell this year with the new start date, there simply weren't enough days, or the calendar would have been so out of whack that it would have been very disruptive to the high school content that they would be able to get in those courses.
So currently, because I have the 2021 calendar, there's a two-day difference. Eighty-eight days the first semester and eighty-six days the second semester, and that's with ending in January. So obviously, pushing it back before winter break would have increased that gap, and that would have been very difficult on high school.
So, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, my only concern, and I recognize that we are kind of tied, but the one thing I'd like to think about correctly is, I worry about those, you know, upper-level classes in high school, like calculus, two weeks is a long break. So maybe we could, maybe talk with the teachers about, and give back some sort of review, you know, some, you know, I'm not so concerned about 3rd grade, but like, you know, the high-level math and science courses, I mean, two weeks is a long time.
And a lot of our teachers are starting to do the flip classrooms too, where they're doing like the little videos and things like that, that even if those, if those are available, then that can also be a helpful tool.
During the committee process, they talked about that, what those strategies look like, especially those couple of weeks when we get back, so.
And that was going to be my comment too, just with, if that means finals are after the winter break, that's my concern, is just how are we making sure that our students aren't, well, I won't say aren't, that they are prepared, you know, ready and prepared to, and that the final, their final score really does reflect their learning.
Sure, sure. And honestly, for both high school principals and the teachers that were on the committee that represent the secondary, they have the same concern. So I think it's going to be heightened for all of our secondary folks because they're sure, they're certainly aware of what the new calendar looks like.
See, I guess, when I was in high school, years and years and years and years ago, we started after Labor Day. Yes, we went, we went till like June 6th, but I don't remember, I thought we were somehow able to end the semester at winter break, but maybe it was just like lopsided.
Majority, for many years, the majority of people did it after, ended after. And then about a 10-year span now, people have gone, trying to get done before break because it just makes sense. The other thing we do too, just remember though, we do have several kids that are exempted from finals as well, so it's not, some of your higher-level classes is what we're talking about, but some of those kids are exempted too, so it helps too.
And with any change, I mean, it's going to be an adjustment, but we'll figure it out, and everybody will fall in line. I remember when I was in high school, we had finals two weeks after winter break, and the benefit was, for those of us who were in higher-level courses, it gave us that time to study and prepare without the additional homework. And that's what I remember, so.
Yeah, you were motivated. Rodney, you had mentioned that there was a little bit of discontent with the calendar. I know we can't please everybody all the time.
Well, obviously, with the changes, I think that our staff looked at this from different lenses. Certainly, our high school wanted to make sure that the schedule aligned with the AP exam because it's a national schedule. Our elementary didn't want to start on a Monday. And so we certainly had to get through those, but at the end, I mean, we did the best we could with what we have. Right? So I understand it, and we worked through it, but, you know, we presented four options, and, you know, some of the ideas, I think, under different circumstances had some potential, but the ideas given the calendar and when we have to start and how many days before Labor Day, et cetera, we would not be able to do that, so. But I think all is well now because we've come to the realization, this is the best we have.
Okay. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, then we do need a motion.
And you're just approving the first one. The second one is there for you to see. We just, so you're just proving for next year. But we always do two so you can see it.
2021.
And the second one mirrors the first one.
Yes.
Might be off a day or two just because of the counter, but it's the same.
So I move to approve the 2020-231 calendars as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.01, District Financial Report. Charles.
Do you want me to drag this out a little bit so we can feel like we've had a full meeting?
We have two hours.
Just one non-financial note. If anybody has any particular affinity for that shack of a building we've been using for restrooms and concessions of St. Charles West, it's probably coming down in the next week or so. So, you know, go get your pictures now if you need to do that. Healthcare Trust continues to perform well. We're down just slightly from last month, but we had a fairly high month for medical, given a couple of things we know about our staff group. It was not Mrs. McClard, but I'd anticipate that may be reflected again this month. So we'll probably see a little bit of a dip there, but still in very good shape as far as the overall fund totals there. On the next page, really, it just illustrates, you know, we began the month $24 million, and we ended it with just shy of 19. This is the typical slide we see from the beginning of the calendar year to the end of the calendar year. So between that 18.9 million that we started the month with and right now, we have continued to spend, and we've passed the December 5 payroll, which is typically our pinch point. We'll receive, and with no issues at all, that's typically when our balances are the lowest because on the 15th, we'll receive our first disbursement from the county of escrowed property taxes. So that then begins to right the ship. Most of those dollars, though, will come in in January, so it'll be a couple of months before you see them on the books. But we're in good shape as far as that, as far as that goes. And if you can look there, we don't really even have that many outstanding checks, only about $2.4 million in outstanding checks, which is, at this time of year, sometimes we have held checks from PSRS intentionally to make sure we didn't bottom out, but we didn't even do that this year. So we're in pretty good shape as far as that goes. The year-end on the next sheet, it looks just like this one, just again, I want to point out, so far, total revenues in the year through November had been 11.5 million, where our expenditures have been over 38. And obviously, the lion's share of that's in salary and benefits, but we also have just shy of $11 million in capital expenses this year, most of which are bond issue expenses. And so again, the ending fund balance is the same there. And then the final page of the report shows the budget adjustment report, and we're still projecting to roll in around 22% at the end of this fiscal year. This report always differs a little bit from ASBR, and so you remember from back when we approved agreements with the associations, that we agreed that if the balances were below 20% or above 25%, then we would potentially reopen negotiations for the 2122 year. So once we get to the end, which would be June 30, and we get the ASBR, then we'll see where we land. So this is still an informal figure, but every month, it gets a little more precise as we go. Questions?
Kind of nice to not have to burn a vacation day from work for negotiations, so.
I don't think anybody will disagree with you on that one.
You'll be saving me.
We have started preliminary discussions with SCEA about how to spend the 2% we've already agreed to use for salaries. We were waiting until after December 1. December 1 is not any kind of mandatory retirement announcement date, but there's some financial incentives related to sick leave payouts that start going down after December 1. So that's typically when we can say, okay, most of these, most of the retirees are on our list. We're at 17, I think, 18 for the year. And so we'll kind of look at what those folks are making versus what we think their replacements are making, plus the 2%, and then we'll kind of see where we go. The association's leadership, Nicole and Kelly, have indicated to me that they'd like to take a step, if at all possible, but we'll just see where we go. I think that's probably going to be likely, but we'll have to see. We've got several long-tenured teachers retiring, and so they're on the high end of the salary schedule.
I'm sorry, did you say that they would like to take a step?
Yes.
Oh, you mean like an increase?
A step down on the schedule. Instead of just putting, spreading the money evenly across the schedule, they'd like to take a step for experience, if possible.
Okay.
So we negotiated the percentage, but not how we would spend it.
Okay. I get it.
22% is that about what we're going to do? We always spend about 22%.
Yeah, we've been, we've been higher, Mike, since we passed the levy increase in 2014. We've finished one year as high as 30%. Most have been above 25, but obviously, we've spent that down intentionally, but now we do, we are entering a period where we'll want to be more cognizant of that in the future. We've got, of course, the agreements for this year, this coming year and the next, but when we get back to negotiating with staff, we'll need to see where the local economy is and the state and the status of funding.
Did you, I know last month, we talked about your spending guidelines for the buildings. Did you communicate that to the buildings? And what was, any feedback?
No, I mean, they knew that that was the plan, you know, but we were just waiting until after we'd had some opportunity to talk with the board, and so everybody, I think, is ready for that, and we've told them, you know, starting second semester, that that'll be our guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we do need a motion.
I move to approve the financial report as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and finally adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.